July 26, 2022, GBOS Budget Special Meeting Number One. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors, its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Open Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310 and Anchorage Municipal Code 1.25 Public Meetings. The Girdwood Board of Supervisors operates under the Girdwood Public Meeting Standards of Conduct. All calls, the meeting is ordered at 6:01 PM. I am Brianna Sullivan, Co-Chair, Parks and Recreation Cemetery Supervisor. Guy, go ahead.
Guy Wade, Fire Department.
And online, Amanda.
Public Safety Supervisor.
And Jennifer.
Jennifer Wingard, Roads and Utility Supervisor.
Thank you, everyone, and Mike Edgington is at the Assembly Meeting and will call in, I believe, if he has moments to do that. Does anyone have any disclosures tonight? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
This is Amanda. I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
One second.
Sorry, Jennifer.
Thanks, Guy and Jennifer. Announcement. The public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. Number one on the agenda is the budget overview.
Sure. So this is the beginning of the budget process. We actually just had budget meetings today internally and we'll be starting this process, which will be approval for, in the fourth quarter with the Assembly. So for, just for a quick perspective for the GBOS, you'll be having today being the introduction and then possibly two more work sessions. And then we will probably approve this in the September meeting at that point in time. So over the next several work sessions, we'll work out finalized budgets that we'll send on to the Department of Operation Management and Budget. And then they will enter it in for the administration. Administration will have, if they have any questions, they'll take them back to us. And then otherwise, it usually goes directly to the Assembly for the Assembly approval. And these budgets will start January 1st, 2023. Just to get a quick understanding where we are. Right now, this is a graph of all the service, the different tax districts of the municipality. So the mill levy for each of those tax districts. So just to get an understanding, Tax District 1 is sort of the downtown, midtown, the basically the district that receives all the municipal services and probably where the largest population is. And as you can see, their mill levy is 16.84. And so these different columns explain the different mills that they're paying for. Whereas you look at ours, we're Tax District 4. The Valley Levy is, for us, is 4.92. And so all our services are under that levy. So police, fire, roads, parks, and then when we do have a budget cemetery would be under that there. And so we have two areas we pay for. We pay for the service area and we pay for ASD. And everybody pays 7.63 for ASD. So that's equal across it. And then we all get a rebate from Area Wide. So they've collected enough taxes and other forms of revenue for Area Wide that the budget is strong enough that we get a small rebate back. So that reduces our mill levy by 0.14 there. So last year, last year and the year before, we actually paid for Area Wide out of our residential taxes because of low revenues from lack of tourism. So a big driver on this is rental car tax and bed tax that runs Area Wide. And so historically, we've actually seen a rebate there at times that reduces your property tax just a little bit in that aspect. But with Area Wide, you get all the services from EMS to library to the dog catcher and food inspection and things like that, health department. I get going through that. So with that, our total mill rate for '22 is 12.41. That makes us the second lowest tax levy in the municipality. And we're definitely the lowest with all essential services. And below us is the Turning In Army area. Actually, our neighbors, Subcoke Creek, and then Bird Indian. They have no services besides school district and a little bit of police. They have like a small fund that's meant for emergencies from APD to respond to major emergencies. But beyond that, they just pay for school for the most part. So, yeah, that's where we stand at this point with the mill levies and how the taxes work there. So, any questions with that? The next slide I'll show, going down here. Stay with me here. I gotta get it flipped.
Actually, Kyle, I have a question.
Sure.
Is that state starting October to October or?
Are the mill levy that?
Yes.
This has to do with January to January. So we're on, our fiscal year is on the calendar year. So, okay, let's see. Twist. I'm sorry. Trying to get it to come around. Put it around down. There we go. Okay, so this is just a historical of the mills for Girdwood, the mill levy for Girdwood since 2010. And this year, we're at 12.41. And our mill levy's down. And that has to do with our assessed values. Our assessed values have gone up so much in the last two years that our mill calculation allows for it to go down. So overall, you know, our tax burden hasn't gone down, but our assessment has gone up. So that's giving us more room under our cap to deal with it. As you see, our mill levy this year is 4.92. It has to do with assessments and then also has to probably do with some rebates seeing from General Savings Building, which helps reduce our need there for tax in residence. The highest we were at was last year. It was 13.59. And that's because we had to pay back that bond debt that the state didn't reimburse for. This year, the state reimbursed for that bond debt. With oil prices being better, they had more money. So they paid off the debt for the bonds we have on schools. Whereas last year, that was the first time ever we had to pay that mill 1.09 there. So that really skyrocketed our mill levy overall. But we've been in this general range of 12, you know, between 12.93, you know, probably the average, I would say, around 12.6. That we've been here for at least the last five years, six years in that aspect. And that's after police came. So that definitely raised our mill levy when we took on police services. So, and you can see the comparisons to the highest tax district, which is Tax District 1, City Downtown. And you can see they were as highest, almost 18. Now they're down at 16.84 for mills. So they do, they definitely consider to pay a lot more taxes for their services down there. So that's where we sit now. And our 10-year average has been 11.9 and as compared to downtown, which is at 15.82. So over that time. And one mill equals $100 per 100,000 in that aspect. So always kind of give idea, like if you own an $800,000 property in '21, you were paying close to almost $11,000 in taxes there. And that had a lot to do with the school district. And that school district is the largest driver of our taxes for residential that we pay for. All right. Any questions with that? Okay. That was just a sort of a quick synopsis of where we are with our overall and how the taxes are used for and what they're collected for. And, you know, there's some information there in your packet. And you have anything you can answer more as we go through the process here, so.
Thank you.
So I see that part for questions up first. I sent the PowerPoint. Would it be easier for me to go back in the other room and jump on TV, sir?
I can bring it up. You sent it by email?
Yeah.
But just right now?
Yeah.
Before we do number two, does anyone have any questions on number one for the budget overview? Just pipe up. Why is downtown so expensive?
Well, they have all union shops that provide their labor. So they have a street maintenance that's unionized, they have a fire department that's unionized, they have a police department that's unionized, and they have all the major services.
And a community and an improvement district as well, which is like an extra dollar, an extra tax on there too. I'm not sure if that's included in that number or not, but they have that script. Okay, so. So the strategic, just to tie the budget kind of to goals. The strategic goals for 2023 are the same basically as 2022. Six, our minimum staffing to be NFPA standards. And for a cardiac arrest code is six minimum, setting six firefighters for initial response, recognizing that we need about 15 to 16 for a structured fire response to decrease the need or request for AFD station move-ups into the area. Engineer available on all shifts. You can't really fire a structured fire without having an engineer drive the apparatus. Meeting NFPA training standards for operational roles. Getting occupational health standards for operational roles. Retaining staffing during periods of high demand for skilled labor. And in other words, it's very competitive right now for firefighters. And then I added in there for this year, high fuel costs, which would impact all of our volunteers. And then additionally, replace end-of-life apparatus equipment and then advanced life support med staff 24/7. Next slide, please. And I also wanted to share what we've been doing on the fundraising side of things for this year. So we've been pretty aggressively fundraising this year. We were able to raise for extrication equipment, $33,000 of private corporate donations. The Office of Public Safety gave us 115,000 of grants for extrication equipment. And then we got a direct legislative designation, which is for 11 departments. So we'll get about $30,000 out of that, $312,000. We also have a fire act granted for extrication equipment that awards have been announced on. For the command vehicle, the chapel gave us a donation from their Christmas pageant. I started a GoFundMe. We had a deployment revenue. And then also we had a health grant request, which was unsuccessful. And thank you for funding that at the last UBS meeting. The rescue boat replacement, we have a fire act grant request. We've asked the Girdwood Glacier Ranger District. And then we received a credit union donation of $16,000 recently. We also received, we're successful enough, 477,5 welfare grant for a pumpkin and some turnouts and two nozzles. And then we've also got a fire act grant and request for turnout replacement, of which we placed nine sets of those in the last UBS meeting. Next slide, please. So I want to talk a little bit about our current bench strength. Currently, we have three command staff, myself, Deputy Chief Matt Gerhardt, and Administrator Officer Dixon, who's not operational. We have four shift officers that are ALS that provide 24/7 coverage. We have eight hours daily of paid engineer coverage that happens during the workday. We have 10 hours of paid ALS coverage daily. We have eight hours of paid BLS coverage daily. That's basically driving ambulance. And then we have 11 of 26 of our firefighters, on-call firefighters, live in Girdwood. And three of our nine operational paid staff live in Girdwood. And that includes not myself. So if we look, I'd like to sort of, for this sort of opening presentation on the budget, I want to talk about minimum staffing level because again, this is the minimum staffing level for safety. We are supposed to be having for code call, for cardiac arrest calls, and then also for starting a fire response. So what does six mean? Six means one engine and one medic unit, in other words, six firefighters. So currently, if you look at, what does that look like on a yearly basis? It would be one shift officer, captain, which would be 8,760 hours a year. And so currently, we have that budgeted in the budget. We, would we need one engineer? That's the person that drives and pumps the apparatus. That would be 8,760 hours. And currently, we pay for 33% of coverage and then we rely 77% for on-call coverage to pick that up. Two firefighters, because an engine has four people on it. So that's 17,520 hours. Currently, we are 100% relying on on-call coverage to cover that. Then with the medic unit, advanced life support provider, these are the people that will give you drugs and cardio overview if you're having a cardiac issue. That's 8,760 hours. Currently, we have 42% paid coverage and we're relying on 58% on-call coverage. And then one firefighter, EMT, and another one's a bandits driver. Currently, we have 33% paid coverage that happens during the day. And then we're relying 77% on all coverage to get that minimum staffing requirement. Next slide, please. So if you do a staffing shortfall analysis on on-call coverage for minimum staffing, for each on-call firefighter that we have covers 48 hours a month times 12 months. You can find out that each on-call firefighter has, can do a minimum coverage of 576 hours per year. We've asked the firefighters, the on-call firefighters through the membership advisory committee if they would like to increase the number of hours that they can do. And the answer back was that, no, everyone is at capacity. And they're not willing to change policies to increase the number of hours we're expecting when we are required to be on-call. When firefighters are on-call, they're not paid. Those members aren't paid. They, other than the 11 people that are anchored with those, rest of them, the other 15 are driving down from Anchorage and being on-call, not getting paid unless there is an incident that happens. With the increase in fuel costs, some of their costs for everyone has gone up around $200 a month for the privilege of volunteering with the Girdwood Fire Department. So if we look at, again, minimums for 41 and Rescue Cross, which is cross-staffed with Rescue 41, and engineer coverage hours, we need 10 on-call firefighters to reach that gap of 5,870 hours. So basically, that's taking the 576 hours per year and dividing it to that 5,870. To reach the two firefighters in that gap, those on-call, we need 30 on-call firefighters for that. And then for Medic 41, we need nine ALS providers on-call to reach the, to cover the full coverage. And then we also need 10 on-call firefighters to reach the staffing level for Medic 41. Again, this is for basic minimum staffing standards. So the total need for on-call firefighters currently with the paid staff that we already have is 59 on-call firefighters. Currently, we have 26. Next slide, please. So the difficult decision discussion that we have to sort of, as a community, talk about is if we continue with the same budget, when are the priority hours of times the community wants to have fire protection coverage? And then alternatively, is $12 an hour an appropriate wage for on-call firefighters? So I guess that's the discussion level that we sort of have to have. And so if you go back a slide, if you could go back a slide. The objective of meeting the engineer coverage could be ridiculous if you think that a full position is 2,000 hours. I did write a SAFER grant for three engineers to cover the engineer coverage issue. I haven't heard if we got the SAFER Act yet, but that would cover staffing for the engineer position with a match from us for three years. So if I, if we could add in paid shift hours for engineer and for advanced life support, I think we get much closer to, we're still going to need more firefighters, but we get closer to achieving that minimum staffing. And then if you can skip two slides. Cost options for adding paid shifts. Here's just an analysis of what you could see is if we added 10 extra hours of ALS per week, per day, it looks like that, $98,970. That's fully loaded. An eight-hour shift per day, adding an extra hours of engineer, we come out to 75,583 for annual debt. And those are benefited, so that includes that we give them health coverage. If we're looking at not benefited, it would be $54,325 to add six hours of advanced, like an engineer ALS per day. So just as you look at the numbers as we go over our budget, that's kind of, that's kind of where this is coming from. And so it's easy, you know, we, you're working right now on many calls without full staffing, minimum staffing, and that's not a great position to be in. So you might ask, well, how are you still accomplishing your objective? Well, I'm covering evening positions to act as that fourth person sometimes. We're not often having six people at night. And it all depends on, we're relying on people to sign up on shifts when they're available. Obviously, 26 on-call people is not enough. We should have about 50 on the roster. We did have 50 going into COVID, but unfortunately, we're, we are competing with a lot of other things and our on-call rate is not comparable to other places. So people are getting drafted to other services. Questions on this? If we could go back, if we could go back to the minimum staffing or the question, any of it, yes.
Chief Wesson, I have two, but in reverse order. The grant you justified for, how much would that be?
That would cover three positions. So that would cover three. So that would give us 24/7 engineer coverage. So that was my goal for asking for that, was that would completely fix the engineer problem. Like right now, we have eight hours of engineer. And we do have sub-engineers that are on-call, but it's just when they're available and can sign up for shifts. In every, in our staffing model, every shift has an engineer slot. It's just going empty. We are training engineers, but again, we don't have enough firefighters to meet the minimum staffing level as it is. So that's kind of a challenge, but we are training, like we've got three in training right now of existing firefighters that we're trying to step up. But that would, if we received the SAFER Act grant, that would cover the engineer portion.
You know, when you'll find out about that SAFER Act grant?
October-ish for both the, both Fire Act and SAFER Act. Usually around October, we find out if we're successful.
Okay. Thank you. And my second question was back at the beginning with the, all the donations and grants that were listed. Is that somewhere on here?
No.
Or the other one? It's separate.
It's separate. Yeah. And the reason is because the extrication, Anchorage fires and, you know, extrication is outside of the fire service area. So we wouldn't use, so, and outside of AFD area, right? It's in that Area Wide EMS area. So that's why I have to, Area Wide EMS won't provide that. We have to fundraise for it. You can't use fire service taxes outside of the fire service area. And all that extrication work primarily happens outside the fire service area.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the room here?
I got a couple.
Yeah.
I should probably know this, but when somebody's on-call, are they spitting out to fire station? Does that mean they're in Girdwood or could they be at Anchorage at that time?
No, to be on-call, you have to be within three minutes of the stationary in the service area. So if you're a Girdwood resident, which ideally is the preferred model that this whole fire department was based on, you could be at home with a radio. But you have to be, you can't be skiing on the mound.
Okay.
You can't be afar, obviously. But you have to, but you can respond from home. So if you're, if you're coming down from Anchorage, then you're lucky. For the probationary members, when they're due, they, the other thing is the probationary members don't get paid for the first three months they're on the department. And so we require them to actually be in the station to respond for those first three months.
Of these, you know, different categories on the last slide here, if you had your wish list or rank those, what's your greatest need, you know?
So paid engineer coverage. So if we're just talking fire, right? Paid engineer coverage. Because without having an engineer, like you can't expect a station officer to command the scene, run the pump, possibly be the highest level ALS care. It just, it doesn't work, right? So engineer for the fire budget, engineer coverage could be the highest level. And then for the EMS budget, having 24/7 EMS and ALS provider is huge, right? And a two can do a lot, but a three or ALS provider can do more. And currently, we rely often in the evening on having the station officer, who's an ALS provider, be the ALS. But what happens is as soon as we send that ambulance to town with that ALS provider in it, you suddenly lost our fire protection and our incident commander for any fire because they're now in the ambulance. So we really need to have a dedicated EMS provider in the ambulance separately. So ideally, and I believe there is sort of widespread support for this within the department, if we had, always had a station officer, an engineer, and an ALS provider on, and then made up the other three, the other three positions for less skilled level labor, then we make up our six. So that would be, that would be the ideal model, would be to have three. I mean, currently, right now, in the evenings, we're relying on the station officer and then we're trying to do the rest of all other five positions from on-call people. Which would work if we had more on-call people, perhaps twice as many. But it doesn't work right now when we lose people. We've lost three people this month and we lose another one next month. And then we're going to lose another one, another ALS provider for fall. So you have a PA rotation of the service area. So, you know, even as I create new, you know, bring people on, they're not replacing the people that have that certain skill set that needs to be consistent from there.
I guess another one, of the 26 on-call firefighters, are, are any of them qualified as engineers?
Yes. Some of them are engineers and some of them are ALS providers. So they might be, you know, for a while there, we had a couple of paramedics. We just lost one to Life Med Air Ambulance. We have, you know, a number of them that are only here seasonally. So we are, you know, that's the model right now, is trying to take, over volunteering to take a shift to be on-call.
And you have about half of the on-call people that you need?
Yes.
What, I guess another question. Like comparable to the $12 an hour, is there, you know, I don't know, we could compare this station to anywhere else in Alaska, but.
So Bear Creek is advertising a position right now for a firefighter one, EMT one, for $26 an hour. You know, I think three years ago, we did the analysis of where, if we take it like 10 years ago and extrapolated where it should be for on-call, it should have been around, it's like two, three years ago, it should have been around $22 an hour. So it's short. We have, because we were desperate for engineers and ALS providers, we thought ALS and engineer coverage, so they're getting $20 and $21 an hour if they go on-call. Just that was trying to be incentive to try and get them to sign up to be on-call, is to have them that way. So they are getting that, but it's, the other people are all getting $20. Or nothing if you're the first three months of probation.
Any other questions online? Amanda, and then we'll circle around. Amanda, and then we'll circle around.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chief Weston, for putting this together. I wanted to look at, yeah, that spreadsheet there. In the 2023, it doesn't look like we have a line item for, I mean, there, there is a line item, but there's no value in the paid on-call. Did I miss one?
So, so I pulled, if you can see, I pulled the budget for actuals there, for January to July. I don't have the ability right now to pull the on-call where we are right now, because in our software system, it doesn't pull it by, it doesn't differentiate. And so I am probably a week out of being able to provide that number exactly, because I have to get someone to manually pull it. Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. So, so what you see, what you see there in the, the budget to actuals for 2022 is that's to, from January to the end of July. But unfortunately, in the way the system pulls it, it just pulls it as a labor total.
Right. And I'm actually wondering, 2023 budget. The orange.
Amanda, Amanda, could you repeat that? You cut out a little.
So sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
I was wondering about the 2023 budget, the orange highlight doesn't have values for paid on-call.
Right. Because I, because what I did this year is I, because we had the budget to actuals, I based it on looking at what our actual budget to actuals, you know, we, for the first time this year, we now have like half a year when we did the budget, which is huge. And so I was able to base it on what we had total. But so that's total spent. So, so I would say we're at least about a week out of me being able to request the information to just pull the paid-on-call hours for those people that are paid on-call.
So we'll be able to?
But that will, that will be populated in there at the next budget meeting.
Great. So another question, and that's on your slideshow presentation, your last slide, the rate of pay, and it looked like we had listed ALS, oh, thank you. ALS, it looks like their rate would be, base rate would be less than, or BLS. And I just was wondering if you could speak to that, why that's?
Let me see here. I think what we're looking at is we're looking at what the base, what a six-hour engineer, an eight-hour engineer is versus a eight-hour engineer or ALS. And then the 10-hour, it's an average, and that's the way it's calculated. It's kind of weird, but that's the way it's been calculated. So they have a base rate and then an overtime rate. And I can have Christina Dixon come to the next meeting, and we can help her explain that a little better than I can.
That'd be great.
Yeah. It becomes a fact, it's a factor rate between, when it's a 10-hour rate, it's kind of weird. But I'll have her explain it, because this is her spreadsheet for that portion.
And have, have you all explored the idea of maybe doing an incremental on-call, where higher levels get higher pay, and maybe that would attract more higher levels?
Um, yes, currently, we did that. So we, we did a, so, so zero, like certifications up to, like, EMT two, firefighter two gets $12 an hour. A engineer or ALS gets 20 or 21, depending if they're also ALS.
And that's still not keeping people?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would say that it's not like people are leaving because they're frustrated. They're just leaving because they're getting, you know, other opportunities and that. But I think, you know, I think it was a huge increase, you know, we just implemented the engineer coverage midway through last year, right? To try and retain engineers. And trying to incentivize people to become engineers.
Did you have something, Mr. Daniels?
So going back to that spreadsheet, the total for labor is inclusive of paid on-call.
Yes.
So when, when you come up with the paid-on-call number, it will reduce the total labor number.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it'll.
So we're not going to see a greater amount asked, it's just going to provide clearer information.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's because of the way, because of the, yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, that's important, I guess. The dollars that you see right now are what we're asking for.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Jennifer.
Jennifer, next.
Thank you. That is a lot of information, and I really appreciate having it all laid out like that. I'm sorry, I have a very basic question, if we can go back to kind of, all right, back to kind of minimum staffing levels that you, early on, that you were talking about. Could you just address, is that, those minimums, are those based on any fire department or a fire department for a town of our size, or where do those minimums come from?
That's the NFPA national standard for rural fire department, rural. So that's calling us rural fire department.
Okay. And so that?
So that's a, that's an NFPA, and I can, I can show you the spreadsheet where you do the calculation. Additionally, when we, and then for a code, you know, six people is ideal for a cardiac arrest code, and Amanda can speak to that. So there's that. Six is also good, because six provides the ability for the medic unit to leave, to go to town. So they're, you know, they're basically out of the area for four hours, or three to four hours, and then that still provides fire protection coverage or a second medic unit availability in the Girdwood Valley. And you might say, gee, how often do you have two calls going on at once? Frequently on the weekend, or sometimes at weird times, or sometimes we have three calls going on, and we're spread kind of thin. So, so there's that. And then, what else to tell you about the, oh, when we started, three years ago, when we started the contract negotiations with AFD, we sat down with the Ben Towne and Chase from AFD, and we talked about what's our minimum staffing, and there seemed to be a consensus that six was the number that we should have one medic unit, one engine. So you could say, well, just have an engine. Well, no, we still want to have a medic unit. So. And then the four people, a medic unit, right? You need one, at least the minimum of one person in the back. If it's a critical patient, sometimes you need two people in the back, and then you need someone to drive the medic unit. The other thing to think about is especially in Girdwood, when you go to medical calls, we have spiral staircases in our houses. We have large flights of stairs, and you can't expect two people to sometimes physically be able to lift and get a patient out of a house. Even the best, super-strong firefighters need more people to lift patients onto a gurney and get them down, and down the stairs, and down the spiral stairs, you know, spiral staircases. I don't think people think about that. Or sometimes people are wedged in between toilets and things and that. And you just need more people. If you have less people, you're not going to have more, more percentage of back injury, right? Also, if you have a car accident, oftentimes, it involves more than one car. And just having two people on cannot provide coverage for a multi-car accident. Now, on the fire staffing, which is really what we're talking about here, if you're on some departments, professional IAFF departments, they've gone down to three people for staffing. But three people for staffing is areas where there's other mutual aid plus I, and so that they can augment their staffing with other people. We have a 45-minute wait for someone to come from Anchorage. So we not, and they're not professional firefighters, so we four firefighters on an engine. And there's many studies that can tell you the efficiency rate of fire activities for having four people, and the rationale for four people on, on call. Additionally, for to start an interior attack on a fire, you need to have one person in command outside, an engineer, and then two firefighters go in, two in, two out, right? So having just two people on is not great. And then, and then just to let you know, there's been many evenings where we haven't had full staffing on, not the minimums. And we are trying to meet it, and we're just, you know, so. We've been very lucky so far that we've been able to accommodate everything, but it's not, it's not meeting, you know, standards, national standards. And then you should also know that on the SAFER Act, the SAFER Act is based also on those minimum standards, and so the minimum standards is six, and that's how qualified to submit the SAFER Act was because we were meeting our minimum standards.
Thank you, Chief Weston. Amanda or Jennifer, did you have a follow-up too? Jennifer?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Amanda, did you have another one?
Oh, I'm good, thank you, I'll lower it.
Quick question.
Thank you, Guy.
Sure. So it looks like with the increase in labor, you know, 292,000, that would get you to what you feel is adequate funding to take care of these issues that you're having?
Yes, like an increase in staffing, I believe so.
And then with the 19,000 in non-labor, it looks like the operating expenses go from 35,000 to 80,000. And in your comments line, it says replacement of aging fire equipment. Any of that stuff to consider capital?
If we go back, if we go back to that.
Sure. Let me bring that side up.
Um, so, so for the NOx boxes, those are, those are, our NOx boxes are obsolete. And so that's why we require that. But you could call that capital, because they're probably going to last 10 years, right? And it's a, and it's a hard box that is in the fire equipment. So, yeah, I could, you could say that could be a capital expense. And then the DATA 911 terminal, that's a, that's the computer screen that tells us where to go and all the information in the fire apparatus. So if we can call that capital, that would be that as too. But I didn't know if it would count or not as capital.
Yeah, if we can call that, that'd be nice, you could pull that out. At least you would keep your non-labor flat.
Yeah.
At 19,000, so you wouldn't have the increase. And so, so the biggest increase you would have from, for the service area would be the 290K they're asking for in labor.
And then I also would like to say that I, as you can see on this one, because we had the same level of EMS funding, and I, oh, I should, oh, this is the older, it's actually, should say 502, 50, sorry, 507, 500, not, this was an error on that one. So 507, 500, for 2000, and the difference is just in the labor. The, what I did was I tried to move more expenses over to EMS. So part of like the liability coverage and everything is, and what is comp, is taken over by EMS versus fire service area paying for it all. Does that make sense?
So you're saying your, your asks for EMS issue will be flat?
Yes.
It'll be 507.
Because when we went into the contract negotiation, AFD said it was for two years. Even though we haven't signed it, it was supposed to be for two years. So that's my assumption that it's, it's flat.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you. Guy?
So I was looking at that too, the operating expenses at 80K. It might be wrong, Peter, pay Paul, but, you know, if we're struggling to stay under our, our mill rate, you know, within that, is any of that could be considered EMS and moved more of that over into that?
That's, that's really moving a lot of stuff over into EMS. And I mean, maybe we can increase more of the fuel that EMS is getting, but it's a flat amount that we're getting, so.
Any other questions for Chief Weston? Thank you for this presentation.
Thank you.
And the PowerPoint. So it is now available in our packet probably, or online?
Yes, we will have it in the packet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. So, so why I'm just involved here?
On behalf of the, you know, of the Fire Board. So I think it's important to realize that, you know, like anything else, that Alaska was reporting just last month, a 12% inflation rate. So, so to say that, you know, we're, you know, we really should, you know, consider at least 12% of this, especially the non-offering, as just keeping up with inflation. So I, you know, and, and the other thing I can say is that, you know, by and large, for a number of years, fire has been, you know, been pretty close to a flat funnel. We need to, we need, we are doing ourselves a huge disservice by not staying, you know, by not continuing to increase our budgets, and we have something to work with. Because every year that you don't go, that you don't go to the cap, you don't get to come back. You know, and, you know, there's, you go around this town, you know, and I've been here for almost 50 years now, I've never seen so many homes being built. And all of those homes are another, well, first of all, they're another tax resource, but secondly, they're another liability for the community to take care of. So we can't just sit here and, you know, and flat funnel. And the last thing I'd say is, we, we, you know, we managed to figure out how to pay for lease where we never paid for lease, but, you know, up until about four years ago, you know, that was the state of Alaska, provided us the state of the country. So, and yet, you know, fire departments still sit here and charge along, and, you know, and, you know, Chelsea does a spectacular job of getting EMS, you know, you know, fraudy, you know, so that the, so we're getting a much more reasonable amount of funding for EMS. So it isn't, so that the fire just isn't having to pay for, you know, the same level of service they had in the past. But, you know, but I think the numbers tell us, you know, that, you know, you're gonna, you know, in the end, you're gonna pay for, you're gonna pay fire insurance on your property, or you're gonna, or you're gonna pay, you know, for a fire department. If we lose, you know, if we lose our ability, you know, is that, what's that insurance?
ISO. ISO rating.
Yeah, if you lose our ISO rating, you just see your, you know, your home insurance go up.
Our ISO rating was based on our earthquake response, and we had 16 people available in the valley for earthquake response. So that's a fair space that we have down there, which we don't anymore by those numbers.
But it has, it has a big impact on your, so I would highly encourage, you know, looking hard at, you know, at, you know, at getting the fire budget up and then keeping it up. Take more roads to it, please.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels, for your comment. Okay, ready to move to number three for roads budget? Turn page.
Thank you both.
There comes, sorry. Loading time? Sorry. It's just a lot of data, it's trying to move around right now. Okay, there we go. So here's for the roads for street maintenance. Overall, we are looking at a, right now, a $10,000 increase in this operating budget. And as always, that's kind of tied directly to labor costs. As we will see increase of cost of living there. Margaret's within the union, so she will be going up a step. And the mayor gave executive position, which my position is, they gave us a 1% increase for this year. So, so I tried to calculate for those within this spreadsheet. So, so I tried to calculate for those within this spreadsheet here. And a lot of these are just rough, not rough, but estimations on the different categories based off of the past years. I gave you three years of actuals in the operating budget there from 20 through 22, with 22 still in progress. So 20 and 21 are definitely actuals as to what we spent during that period. And so we're well, well on pace with what we've spent in the years past for our current budget to 22. Now, one thing about the road budget, and I really learned this today, is that we may be forced into a situation where we need to rebid the road contract this year within the next month. We've been in negotiations with Western about a fuel variance. They currently do not have a fuel variance within their contract. And when they bid the, the contract with the service area, diesel was 295 a gallon. They get their diesel delivered here to the yard, and so there's extra delivery charges. But they're paying just over six and a quarter right now for diesel. So they've seen, you know, diesel go up close to $4 a gallon while they've been here. And right now, they're eating all that because they don't have a fuel variance within their contract. Eagle River, which is the second largest, is the largest service area, so we're the second largest behind them. They do have a fuel variance written within their contract. And we were trying to work with purchasing to get that fuel variance applied for Western. To make an amendment to our contract so that they could have a fuel variance. And we basically would work with Western and we would pay the difference between what the bid rate was. So from between 295 and what the current fuel prices are for each month. And then we would determine what the burn rate is on each piece of equipment that we have under hourly contracts. So from a grader to a loader to an excavator, we can go to resources and find how much that burns an hour. And then we would have that as a fuel variance. The big disagreement between purchasing and Western has been going, when the base rate would start. And Western would like the base rate to start from when the contract was bid because they're working off those fuel calculations at the time. And the purchasing department doesn't want to go any earlier or later. It doesn't want to go any later than January 1st of this year. So that would be for them a difference of 69 cents a gallon for fuel that they would be eating. So that'd be 33% of the increase that they've seen, they would be eating in order to get some sort of very fuel variance out of this colony. Western hasn't made a decision if they're going to let go of the contract. But if they do and we rebid, it's, in the end, I think it's gonna be more expensive for the service area because of it. But the purchasing director is very adamant that she feels that it could also be less expensive. But just from my experience and knowing what you're paying per hour for a piece of equipment to run out there, and we know where the fuel prices are at this current day, we're probably gonna see increase on those hourly's no matter what. So it'd be a disappointment to lose Western. They've been very good. They know, they've gotten to know the town really well now, especially in the winter. And they know what is needed to help keep the town very operational during snowstorms and rain and ice storms. So we will keep tabs on that, but that could really affect us going forward in our street maintenance budget. We find that we have to rebid and the hourly equipment comes back much more expensive. We may need to look at the contractual items. Right now, we have a limit of 700,000 that we spend annually, which, you know, is, is a bit of a stretch to do both winter and summer maintenance with a limit of 700,000. We were at 600,000 and we switched last year to 700,000. We're at 600,000 for almost probably 10 years. And so, but we do a lot of work with $700,000. And occasionally, we have a grant that helps us to do some other stuff. But we're seeing these prices creep up because of rebid and also even with the fuel variance. Just our operational costs are getting more expensive. Our calcium that we use for dust suppression this year was more expensive. I haven't changed that yet. But I need, need to take a relook at that. We find that up under our, our repair and maintenance supplies here. And so that's $66,000. And right now, we have a bid out for our winter sand and salt. And we expect that to be more expensive because that will include trucking and also salt's more expensive. Everything's just more expensive. And so we're, we're contending with all these issues just to keep up with our basic services. And, you know, we've kept this budget very flat for a long time. We've had various small increases, mostly related to labor, our non-labors have stayed low. And we may, at this point, be at a crossroads where we have to evaluate that because the inflation costs for Alaska are just substantial. We're seeing it everywhere. You know, we're seeing almost double the costs on asphalt because oil's been so expensive. And so it's just, everything's sort of creeped up on us and we're chasing it there. So, so I will know more on this budget. This is just introductory tonight for you guys. But I will know more as we see how this plays out between Western and purchasing and what we have to contend with as we move forward with that.
Hey, I'm a little confused here.
Sure.
So go back to that first, when you, when you started talking about, if you would please. So is that staff?
Staff.
Unity staff. Which page is it? Can you give, you, the roads maintenance budget?
So all our money comes out of this line. It's a line contractual services 540640. You can see it right here. 700,000. That's what we use for Western.
Okay. Just having trouble.
Yeah, it's on page two. Just the third lineup from non-labor total.
Page, that's 700, that one.
Okay.
That's been, it's 600. In what year was that?
And we switched in 22, or in 21 to 700,000. Because we knew we were going out the bid then. We knew that we were gonna see more expensive rates, so we bumped it up 100,000.
And how many years was that contract?
This contract that we're currently in, we're in the second year of five. So they would rebid in basically 25.
And I, I'm sorry, I was trying to get there. And they're asking, they may just walk away from, or they're asking for a what percentage increase on that?
They're asking for a variance, fuel variance on it, which would be dictated by the change in fuel from when the contract was bidded. So like I said, it was about 290 a gallon at that point in time to where current bid rates or current fuel prices are today. And so they were at last, I think, paying something like six and a quarter or 640 a gallon for diesel. And so the delta would be the difference between that. So 290 minus 640, we would pay that per hour per burn rate on, so like grader burns eight gallons an hour. We would pay the difference, you know, times eight per hour.
Rough estimate, you know, 100,000, 50, you know?
I would say overall, you mean in a year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would probably say difference probably would probably be about 50 to 60,000. So the summer, what we do is we bid a lot of the work that we do. So we ask them for quotes and he gives us quotes. And then that way I can look at all the projects and I say, okay, I got all these projects. I want quotes for each individual one. And, and then I determine what we can do for work with this funds we have available for summer funding. So we have a big winter, we have less funds for the summer. We have a light winter, we have more funds for the summer. But with that, I usually have that. So we won't see the fuel variance as much because he'll include that in his quote. Whereas in the winter, it's all hourly, it's time and labor. So I call out, I say, hey, we need the grader. And so he brings out and it took him four hours to do the job. We would pay the variance at that point in time. So.
It's now time to ask questions, or?
Yes, and we could go around if you wanna, or unless you have one right now.
I have one more. So would this, it sounded like they really did a good job and they're familiar with the community. And it would disrupt things to go out to bid again, I would imagine if. So would this, would, would, I guess, would be able to tell during these next three weeks what the 2023 budget would need to look like to cover it?
I would hope. I mean, I can give a rough estimate. We may need to come back and address it at first quarter with this budget. But if it does look like we're going out to rebid, I may suggest that we consider raising the contractual amount to 800,000. So it just really depends on what happens at that point in time. I think I could work within the 700,000 for next year. I think it's worthy of us to go through a year and see what this fuel variance really does. You know, because fuel prices could come way back down and so that his variance won't be very much. So then our costs will, you know, will kind of work itself out. But if fuel continues to stay at 100 to 100 plus dollars a gallon, you know, that's gonna be an impact on the contractor trying to cover that in his margins. And, you know, and the other thing aspect about it is they're eating all the other costs on hydraulic fluid, oil, materials for the equipment, steel, when I need serrated edges, they're buying that. But steel now has gone, they used to buy a serrated edge for 125. They're selling now for 199. And then there's almost a six-month wait to get them. And so he has to buy them all in bulk in advance before I actually call for them beyond the grader. So there's, there's, there's those things that they're eating already that they're not asking for an increase. Now, out in Eagle River, they have two things going on. They have a fuel, fuel variance within their contract and they also have an acceleration clause. So each year, there's a percentage increase on equipment just to, so allows the contractor to keep up with inflation. So, so that, that is twofold. He's not asking for that. He was just asking for the fuel variance. Just trying to be, have more of an equal playing ground as to what other contractors are getting in other portions of the city.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yep.
I have a question, I have two questions, but one is related to what we were just speaking about. So I'll start with that one. And I was wondering if there's anything GBOS or anyone outside of GBOS could do to talk to purchasing or someone else or to convince them to, to work with Western so that contract, the variation could be put?
Well, I think it would be worthy for, I think, once we know maybe what Western is gonna do and we know the reason and behind Western's gonna do, I think it's good for somebody to have a discussion with the director of purchasing. She's pretty adamant that she's gonna stand her ground on this issue. My director today talked, discussed it with her and she was very adamant that if Western has the option, if they want to do that. And she was gonna stick with what she has decided. So, so I don't know if there'd be much change there, but, but I think it is good to know as to, you know, that the GBOS is engaged with this decision and what it does mean for the community. Now, she could be right and there could be a bidder that comes in that has lower rates and, you know, hopefully does just as good a job as Western. But we wouldn't know that until we went through the bid process. Just from my experience, I would think that hourly's would go up on our piece of equipment. And, and in the end, it costs the service area more, so. But I do think the fuel variance issue should be amendment within the new contracts. So we don't have to go through this like we have with, with this, this period.
And who writes that contract?
Well, I will present it to purchasing. We'll see if purchasing accepts having that amendment in there. I will take mostly the direct language that purchasing allowed for Eagle River to have it in there and include it for the future.
Right. Does anyone on the call have a question regarding that last topic? Okay, I don't hear anything, so I'll go with my next question. And that is the pay increase for our service area manager, Kyle, for you, where would we put that in here?
All our, all our salaries and benefits are captured here in the labor line. So it's a combination of both Margaret and I's salaries are based right there.
Okay.
So if there was an increase, that would, that's where it would show up.
Okay, I think if GBOS could do that, we would not really prefer to flat fund it but to have inflation in there.
Okay.
I'm not sure where we go from, except to bring it up at this meeting.
Okay. I can look into it and, and directly talk with the chairs and present something in the next meeting.
Because if inflation is 9% and property evaluations are going up 30 to 40%, just didn't want to flat fund it.
Okay.
Any questions on, from Amanda or Jennifer? More from you guys?
Thanks.
Sure, Mike would have questions. I'll probably save them for next one.
Okay.
Okay, so number four, parks and recreation budget.
Okay, so parks and recreation. It's our smallest budget, but maybe the most detailed because we have so many different categories in there. But what we're primarily looking at, and let me scroll down to it over again. We're looking at a $13,000 increase on this budget and mostly tied to labor. We've had a heck of a time this year trying to recruit labor and keep labor. We did have a position hired. We had another returner who came wanting to come back. And we have lost both of them to higher paying jobs in the community. And so what we need to do next year is find a way to make this job competitive again so that people are interested and attracted to it. We, we are not even attracting even the least qualified at this point for this position. And I think it's because they're entry-level park caretaker jobs. What we're looking for is a more of a caretaker too, who's more qualified, who can do some more leadership and management for us. And, you know, come with a stronger skill set, which we've had in the past. We've had people who've been attracted to this job. But now other organizations around us are paying equal or better than these positions paid in the past. And so we are seeing them going to places like the health clinic or the US Forest Service. Whereas before, the unity positions paid more and offered more benefits. So we're asking for that increase there, which would go from 22,000 to 27 and hopefully allow us to attract some more there. Even if we get one full-time person in there, one thing we could do is supplement it with a student conservation association or Alaska Trails interns. And we've used those in the past and they've been great. They come up here, they're full of energy and they're looking to get out there and do labor projects all summer long for us. So we can work that and we show that down here. We do have some increases that we are dealing with and, and some changes with our individual park maintenance and things like that. But that's still, actually still kind of playing out. So I probably have more details about that. But you can see we've kept everything flat for right now, maybe with a few changes in our operational expenses. One thing I will add in there is probably a little bit more, or excuse me, some funding for tennis courts. Just because we want to keep up with some of the paid repair out there on the court surface itself. And I didn't have that in here. We're trying to handle that ourselves, but lacking staff to do it. So I'll try to get out there tomorrow and do some repair. But it's been a challenge trying to keep up with some of these more basic maintenance things. So yes, we have some funding changes down here. We do keep all our nonprofit to flat, so it would be 35,000, so 25,000 to the grants. And then it would be 30 or 10,000, or excuse me, 25,000 to four valleys and then 35,000 for the grants. And then I do have a bit of an increase for. And then I do have a bit of an increase for our four weeks with the SCA crew. We made sure and shared that over to two interns or two SCA groups that we have that would come. We tried to get SCA this year and they were having a hard time hiring people and they're behind from year before with their partners. So they weren't able to take anything on, but we did get a Alaska Trails crew that's going to come in September. It's going to be a crew of anywhere from five to six and they're going to work on the Virgin Creek and a few other trails for us for two weeks. So we have that option as well. So Alaska Trails has developed more of a trail crew program, which is, is excellent because they're a local organization and we've partnered with them on many grants. So, so that would be a big change this year in those areas. That's where our, our increase will be. And so that's what we're looking at, a $13,000 increase for Parks and Rec. Now, like I said, this may change as we go through the work sessions. When I dive into some of those issues and then I add in some funding for tennis courts and things like that. So, so we'll be looking at those and bringing that forward if we have those changes and further work sessions.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions on Parks and Recreation Budget from anyone? Hear any? So thank you for that. It's really clear. So we can go to number four cemetery budget, five cemetery budget?
Yeah, so we have no budget for cemeteries this year. We don't see any operational needs at this point. And I know that Tommy and the Gerwood Cemetery are looking at going for a bond for the building of the cemetery. So that would probably be our biggest focus for '23 is getting a bond initiative out there to fund the cemetery build. So that will be kind of worked out over the coming months, but no operational budget requested for '23 for cemetery.
Number six, police budget?
Police budget. So we are working right now with Whittier on renewing the contract with them. Our current contract expires at the end of this year and their preliminary numbers that they've given me is that they are looking at a 12% increase in the contract. And what that would do is it would be a one-time increase of 12%. Let me pull it up here. And it would be, there would be no CPI increase after that. So they would do away with the Consumer Price Index, which we currently deal with right now. So yeah, you can see in '22, in '21 was the first year of this contract, 20, excuse me, 20 was the first year of this contract. In '21, we didn't have a CPI increase because the CPI actually went negative. This was, you know, the heart of COVID and the Consumer Price Index went flat, actually went negative. So there was no change there per our contract. But in '22, that's when we started to see the inflation come in. And so the Consumer Price Index went up and we estimated that to be, I believe somewhere at 7% range. So it was an increase of 33,000 that we saw there. So based on that, we would look at a, a, a 12% increase, and I have the wrong number written in here, sorry, for '23. Our 12% would be based on the 675 plus the $33,000 through 3375 increase for this year, which was 708. Oh, I do have it right, sorry. And so the new contract amount would be 793. And that would be, according to Whittier, that would be our contract amount, our annual amount for the next three years. So there would be no Consumer Price Index that we would have to calculate in over the next three years. So, so I feel that's, is a, a, a good increase. It's right within inflation. It helps them deal with issues that they're having on their end and, but it also gives us a good projection of what our police costs are for the next three years, at least on the contractual aspect. And we know we'll be paying 793 for the next three years. And we wouldn't be seeing any increase that allows us to really calculate our expenses easily going forward. I do have a small increase of 2,000 for the car towing and miscellaneous police services. We've just been using this category more and more. We've already towed over two dozen cars this year that have either been abandoned or illegally parked and, and have dealt with that. Today I just paid a bill for $400 for abandoned car that was full of trash left in Town Square to be disposed of. So, so that account has become really useful for us, allowing us to buy emergency equipment for the community, either from a reader board that we put up for Forest Fair that said high fire danger, which causes $1,000 to rent for the weekend, to different things that we're dealing with wildlife and bear safety and things like that. So, so that fund, I do ask for a little bit of increase there. So, so the overall increase for this budget would be $86,000 from this year to next year if we go with the increase there for Whittier and the miscellaneous police services account.
Thanks, Kyle. Any questions from anyone?
I have a question.
Jennifer, go ahead and then we'll go Guy.
Oh, either way. I, I just wondered, Kyle, if you could speak a little bit to, that was a very thorough presentation and thank you. I, I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit to, if you know what prompted the police to request this different kind of increase?
Yes, and let me, let me pull up the email because I do have a description from, sorry, from Chris, who's their finance person. Okay, so one of the categories that has cost increase for police is the, they've had a $15,000 increase over the prior year for dispatch services. So this is the contract that they have with Cordova. So that's costing them $15,000 more now in that, in that aspect. In order to retain police officers in this challenging environment, the city council approved across the board increases. So they saw a 10% increase that was effective, 11021, so that's in place. Plus, this was followed by approval of a 4.4% cost of living increase for all employees beginning 1102022. So they, they're definitely dealing with labor expenses there that resulted in changes close to 16.5 total increase in personnel costs in the past year. Fuel costs has, fuel costs have risen significantly and as well as their insurance costs rose more than 5,000 for liability and auto insurance in the past year alone. So just that commuting between Whittier and Gerwood with fuel costs have been significant in that aspect. And then overall, just the perceived costs of everything from, from our weapons to uniform costs, everything along those lines have, have crept up for them with these inflation costs.
Anything else, Jennifer?
Thank you. No, thank you, that's great.
Okay, go to Guy next.
Yeah, when we voted, we voted on Whittier Police Carriage, it raised our mill rate.
Correct.
And.
It didn't, it didn't raise our mill levy cap.
It just.
It just raised our, our overall operational costs.
Yeah.
Yep.
And so kind of, can we quantify that? What, what was that and where are we at now? You, you know what I'm, you know what I'm getting at?
Yeah, so we were, well, let me, let me go back to this real quick and I'll slide up because I think that's a good reference because you can see when police services came into play. We pulled the historical here, sorry.
I guess the reason I ask is, you know, do we get to the point where it becomes more than what we had initially planned on?
I don't believe so. You know, '15 was the last year that we had the troopers here. And so you can see our mill rate was 10.75. And then halfway through 16, we took on police services and we went up to 11.5. So we only incurred a half a year of expenses. And then in '17, that was our first year that we went to additional mill in that aspect. And since then, we have lived within our cap over those years to, to, to do with it. So, and as you can see, since our assessments have gone up, our mill rate has gone down. So, you know, this year we're at 4.92, our mill cap is six. So we have a mill and a tenth of space in there, even with police services now. The highest we ever got was 5.4, which only left us a half of, of a mill space there. So, so by keeping these budgets relatively in check, you know, we've been able to control our mill and, and we can live within the budget guidelines that we've provided.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Kyle, when is, will be the next police or public safety advisory committee that you also have any update or is it?
We will have a discussion with the Public Safety Advisory on Monday, the first. And we will be discussing, most likely, it looks like we're going, they're going to propose, Whittier's going to propose the 12% increase. So I'll be talking with the service, the Public Safety Advisory Committee about that increase and getting their feel on it.
Okay. Great. Guy?
Sorry, one more. So, but that increase won't be agreed upon until, does it need to be agreed upon before we're done with our budgeting sessions here?
No, I mean, if we were to, if things were going to change, what, what, for now, the best number I have is the 12% increase, so I will keep that within there. But if we do have a change, either up or down, we can make any adjustment at first quarter budgets. So if we don't have, if we aren't fully confirmed that we're, that we're going to be seeing a 12% increase with police, then we will stick with what we know and then we can make changes in first quarter, which is right after the new year.
Thank you, Kyle.
I have one other question.
Yes, please.
If that's okay. Kyle, I think I heard you say that we are, excuse me, that you're aiming for police contract to be submitted, is that correct, by end of August? Is that what I heard at the MLE meeting?
Yeah, we would like to have a draft form together that we can start with legal review at the end of August. So, so yeah, over the next coming month, we will start with that. Now, as to GBOS approving it, we will have GBOS approve until we know everything's legally right. So what we want to do is engage lawyers to have them start talking to each other about it and then coming up with a document that both the Public Safety Advisory Committee can review and GBOS, they can give their approval to, that we know legal has reviewed.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Capital budget?
Yep, so what I have up here, let me see, I might have skipped over the, yep. So our current capital budgets right now, these are our current settings. In fire, we have 425,000 available. We have not moved yet, but we probably will here within the next couple of months, not sooner. We will be moving over 74,000, which is the original contribution for capital. And then 80,000 that we had put aside for a loan funding for replacing engine 41, doesn't look like they're going to be able to accomplish getting that engine this year. So the best thing to do is take this funds and put it into our capital budget for future funding of that engine. So they'll be receiving a contribution of 154,000 going to the fire department there. So that definitely will take them close to 600,000 in the, in the coming weeks. So, so that's what the current fire is in. The board has approved, but it hasn't been encumbered yet, but you don't see that shown here, but the board has approved 200,000 for two new utility rigs for the fire department. So, so that that reduction will show up once we start uncovering that money to pay bills. Moving in the Parks and Rec, we have 525,000 designated for the Glacier Creek design and we are starting that right now with the design team. We have gotten all the support and approvals we needed from both the municipality and from the US Forest Service to come up with a design team. So that design team has been formed and we're getting them set up with purchase orders to get them started on it. And so the big, big first thing will be is getting the whole design team in the field at the hand tram, looking at the site for the new suspension bridge and answering questions about can the existing abutments for the hand tram be used for the new bridge? Will the bridge land in the same location as the hand tram? Get all those things so that the engineers can finally put their eyes on together and, and that would be from the structural guys to the geotech guys to our survey team, they'll all be there together and hopefully can flush out answers so they can start putting paper the pencil or pen the paper and come up with the design that we can get out for construction. We have an undesignated account right now of 100, 505,000. We have a contribution that will need to be made from our operating budget, so that hasn't happened yet, but 125,000 will come in there. So that will take that budget up over 600,000 of undesigned capital funds. We have 70,000 left for this room. We used just under 5,000 of it to buy the technology so we could do these hybrid meetings. So this, this technology in this room right here came from this budget. And then we still have $63,000 assigned to the pedestrian flasher. We will work on uncovering that money and then it will go up into our undesigned capital fund. So we'll see an increase there, but as of right now, that money's still tied to that pedestrian flasher, but that project is complete. We just haven't done the, the accounting yet to switch that out, so that aspect. So we have 638,000 right now in undesigned or funds. That number, actually that, that total should be higher because of the Glacier Creek Bridge in there. So we have over a million dollars right now in capital funds associated with Parks and Rec.
Can I ask a really?
Yes, go ahead, Guy.
A little level question. So these undesigned funds, that's money that, are we looking at projects? It's just sitting there and that we can.
Yeah.
Scroll whatever we want.
That's our billing savings. So that's, that's our savings that we're building for capital projects within parks. We have an assign to it and in the next list, I'll show you our potential capital projects that we could do with the money that we're building right now. So, so usually we end up building it up and then once we have enough money, we tackle a project and get the project completed and build money back up again and do it that way. Whereas in town, in Anchorage, they bond. So they'll have a capital project like a new skate park and they'll just put it out with a bond and then, and they collect that, that bond loan to pay for that project. Whereas here, we don't have success with bonds, we have to save money up over time. So over the next two work sessions, I haven't had a chance to really dig into this, but I'm going to give a proposal on how we could save more at a faster rate so we can get these projects maybe completed instead of them taking five to 10 years, maybe we can get them done in two to five years.
I know I've seen this before, but it, it does seem odd to me that, and I know we all enjoy our Parks and Recreation, but it, you know, those funds are so high compared to roads or fire and, you know. It, it just seems a little odd to me, but.
Yeah, and what we did last year is we recalculated to level those planes out. I think there's always been a focus on capital funds going to park projects. I think there's always been a focus on capital funds going to park projects. Because that's a recreational need and they usually have larger um ticket items that go with like rebuilding the skate park or rebuilding the tennis courts. Um so that that had been a priority. And I think in the last uh two years, I've really harped on that we need, especially between parks and roads, we need to equally put funds into each of those. So last year, there was a shift and each fund now is getting a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar contribution.
You remember that.
And so we're we're trying to work on that. Um one thing about parks is that we received a large reimbursement from the state for the flashers. So that funding, which could be also consider a road program. Even though the the flashers were put in to really help with the safety for people coming to the parks, we use the park fund, that went back in. So that's why we see the five hundred and five thousand there. And then the five hundred and twenty-five thousand for the park design, that was a CARES Act grant. So we received that in CARES funding. So that actually is a taxpayer revenue uh through local, it came from the federal government. So so that's why we see so much more in parks at this time.
I have one, Kyle, on the undesigned fire department one.
Yep.
Will we, will we need to move to move the one hundred fifty-four K over and then put it back when? When those rigs can be?
No, they will just appear within this, they'll they'll become like a designated expense. So we will pull out from the undesigned and then they'll, I'll put another line below it that says utility rigs, two hundred thousand dollars. And then we'll show that that funding is there. But what we try to show here is this funding that's actually available right now for for different projects. But they haven't designated yet because they haven't, they just starting that project since they got approval last week.
All right, thank you. Any questions online?
Uh yes, I had one.
Okay.
Kyle, I think, thanks, thank you. Um Kyle, I think you touched on this, that you were talking about um building up our capital funds or un- or undesigned funds. Because of the, because of that circumstance where we don't bond. I thought I remembered um a fairly extensive conversation last year about your goal for this account. Um but now I can't remember the number. Did you, do you have a a goal in mind for getting this account up?
Yeah, my goal was a hundred, was a million of undesigned funds for each account. So for parks and rec and uh um street maintenance and and uh fire. It's a lofty goal, um but that's where I was, I was standing towards that we would have have those reserves built up to that. So that when we do take a project, we can actually knock it out and and not try to um not be worried about finding matching grants and and competing, trying to get project tons. Uh yep, so that that was my goal, was a was a million dollars for each account.
And did you also say that this number isn't, this number in actuality is close to a million, you think, right now?
Yeah, I mean, with uh with the parks and rec, yes, we're at a million. Um and uh but we have also built that off of CARES Act grants and state reimbursements. So we've gotten lucky um in that aspect and we will see that continuously, hopefully, uh going forward. But um but yeah, we're we're there, but also that money, half that money right now is designated towards the Glacier Creek design at the five hundred twenty-five thousand. So so that that money is kind of locked up uh for that. So so for the next project coming up, we need to start saving towards that. Um and we are receiving one point two million from the state. Um some of that will be sucked up into administrative costs, so you could say it's like one point one million. Um but we may need funds from the Gerwood Service Area to help get over the top, depending on our expenses uh for construction. Uh we're hoping that's enough money, but with inflation in the way steel is, um we may need some more funds. And we're still tracking grants, uh one in particular with Erasmus and to uh to work that. So so yeah, there there's some moving factors here, but I I think if we continue to save, um we can definitely tackle a lot of the uh projects that I list here on the following pages for capital projects.
Thank you.
Anything else online? Okay, Kyle, I guess there's more pages.
Yep, and so I'll try to keep moving along here. Um but uh this is streets. Um and so uh last year was a big, big year for streets because we repaved Alberg. And so we used quite a bit of capital dollars to to repave, um to remove and re- and and repave the road there. Um but right now, our current uh undesigned account there is two hundred fifty-two thousand. Um and we have a contribution that needs to come. Um now, what I'm gonna do is watch that contribution because uh we may need the funds. Um to help cover the higher expenses, either we go through a new contractor. Um you know, depending what our bid rates are for our winter sand and salt this year. Um we may need to keep some of those capital dollars behind just to cover operating expenses um that we didn't really estimate for with with this inflation rate. So so we will, we'll keep that there. But overall, we have about two hundred and sixty thousand there undesigned um available for uh for use at this point in time.
What was that number last year before that?
Our number last year for undesigned account, um well, I think we spent almost three hundred, almost four hundred thousand dollars uh for the repave out of this account. And we also had a old state capital grant. And then we used a portion of our operating funds to pay uh pay that. So we had three different sources that went towards it, but uh I think we used four hundred thousand out of this account to pay for that repave. So so yeah, we were, we were well up over six hundred thousand in our undesigned last year. I'm glad we paved last year because boy, it would, that project would be twice as much now. And then our last one is cemetery. We just have funding related, so we're uh remaining from when we did the pre-development there. So uh we probably will clean this up again. Um and I'll probably return to the board to say what we're gonna do with this twenty-three hundred dollars, which account are we gonna put it in? I'll have a recommendation. And then what I'll do is I'll just move over and uh I'll I'll quickly move through this, but if you have questions a long way, feel free to stop me or we can go back to them. Um but these are the capital projects that we suggest uh uh that we've had on our list for a long time. Um Little Bear's Building Replacement, two million. Uh it sounds like uh there may be some ARPA money through uh through the assembly that's being considered for this project. Um uh the Little Bear's Board and uh replacement team hasn't returned to uh the service area to ask about bonding again. Uh we have kept it as a pending item, um but it sounds like the ARPA funds may be coming in. I don't know how much it's gonna be, but you know, hopefully it's enough for them to build a new facility. So we will know about that. And the Gerwood Land Trust is working with H L B on um setting up a land lease to to possibly build a new Little Bear's kitty corner to the baseball field. Uh down in that area and that's called out the area plan, uh sort of location for Little Bear. So so that uh has some moving parts going forward right now, but we still feel at the very minimum, that's a two million dollar replacement. Um uh for uh probably the smallest size that they could load. Uh pedestrian crosswalk, it's always nice, I kind of, I like leaving things on the list to say, hey, we completed it, but we did complete that project and we did get reimbursed from the state on it. So that project is complete. Um and right now, we're uh and the next item is the engineer design build package for the. Uh Glacier Creek Suspension Bridge on the Winter Creek Trail. And so we are moving forward with that and we've secured the funding and so we have five hundred and twenty-five thousand for that project um to complete and move forward with it. And then uh the Glacier Creek Bridge, we uh feel that that will need at least the one point new two million coming from the state and it may need more. Uh through its design uh portion, we will get a cost estimate uh done by professional cost estimators. So we will hopefully have an idea as to how much that uh costs and we're prepared to have the adequate funding to go out to bid. And fund that project when it gets, when it gets bid. Uh the other item, the thing we feel is a master plan for the Alyeska Playfield, parking lot and iconic storage area. We feel that this area could be better used and better developed. Um and we recommend funding that over the next year. Uh we've put this on the back burner because we've been so focused on the trails plan. Um but at some point, we feel that this should be, this master plan should be developed for that area so that we can start moving forward on seeking funding sources uh to make it happen. And uh that's the next item on this list is um. And also combining that fun, that master planning with the Gerwood Park here too. Um so that we maybe do master planning for both with one contractor and hopefully reduce the costs so that we have master plans. Right now, we have no master plans for either of those parks um out there. And then uh the redevelopment of the Alyeska Playfield, we, you know, we're just spitballing here, but it it really, the master plan will sort of kick out what we think. But you know, it's anywhere from eight hundred thousand to one point five million um for that. And uh we're just trying to resolve basic problems up there, which is the poor drainage, uh make the area uh more useful, uh better parking. Uh maybe build a pocket playground, those are just some of the initial ideas, but through a master planning development, um we would uh. Um sort of sort that out. We would take a different approach to this than we are with Trails Committee. This wouldn't be a master plan by committee, it'd be a master plan by department. There would definitely be a chance for public input um on it, but uh we wouldn't do a process where a committee edits and creates the plan. Um the plan would be developed through um planning professionals and department staff, um like most master plans are evolved. So they would have a different approach to it. So uh we would hope that would be for more efficiency and getting it done quicker. And then the other areas that we talked about is a dog park, uh unknown at this point in time, uh with change in staff in H L B. Um we would uh need to work with that and figure out the code issues that we have with doing that. But the idea is to put it down at the end of Corleone's Road here, right before the Lower Ditterod and also create a parking lot for the Lower Ditterod Trail. Um and so uh having two things there together, working together. So. And then Lions Club, we are started on this. We've started the design portion for the uh Lions Club Pavilion. And uh so uh we have that out and running and so hopefully we can get that done so we can start seeking grants um with that design package um and cost estimates. So we we can get it done. Uh the grant or the pavilion is is uh straightforward. Uh it's just like the State Park uh 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 pavilions. Um but it would be designed for this area and this and the code requirements of the municipality. So so we hopefully will have that completed uh by the fall. And then batting cage, there's been a request for a batting cage and we put this in here, twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars. Um and uh we do feel that this could be a mixture of fundraising, a challenge grant from Parks Foundation and some funding from the Gerwood Service Area. Um and that's something I think we'll work on over the winter. Uh the field dedication to Sladen Mole, I know his family is very interested in something like this and they would like to possibly raise funds uh to help support this uh batting cage. So so we'll be uh pursuing that over the coming year. So that's kind of the projects there for Parks and Rec. Before I move on, any questions in that area?
Uh just that last one, Kyle, actually, if someone had, was a nonprofit and applied for one of our grants in the fall to do a batting cage. That'd be a pretty great opportunity.
Yeah, there's opportunity for somebody. So, yep. Uh and then um moving into roads, uh we have several things that we would like to do there. Um and uh one is the Fish Passage on Alyeska Creek at Davos and Mount Hood. Uh we would like to complete these. We completed the whole design package. Um we're ready to go. Uh we just need the funding to construct and we believe we need between one to one point five million um just with the cost there. So that would be three fish patches at Davos, Mount Hood and Lake Tahoe. And so uh uh see that there. Uh another big one is pave timberline. Um from basically a church past Vale intersection to uh Vale Hill to Loveland intersection. Um and look at, put a speed mitigation in there with possible speed humps. Um if you live in this area, you know how bad that intersection is. As soon as it rains, it just potholes out. As everybody comes down Vale Hill and then turns right, they power, their inside wheel spins out and causes all the potholing uh in that section. And so that's one of the most uh frequently traveled areas. And uh it'd be nice to find some speed mitigation ideas that the Department of Traffic would approve um to allow us to put that in there. So so we're looking right now at one million to one point five, but that could be a more expensive. And the reason it's so expensive to pave it is that we probably have to do a dig out. Even on Vale Hill, you can see wood popping up through the hill, mold logs, um but you would want to remove that. And then we would have to bring utilities like water and sewer, manhole and key boxes to the surface. So that they can be accessible, not caught underneath the pavement. So like somebody could turn off the wires at their house, they can easily access it. So we would have to bring those all up. So there's lots of utilities. And there's always questions about why don't we pave timberline and and Alyeska and Vale, these collector roads? And it's because of those situations is that a lot of these roads were built so quickly, they have stumps and trees underneath them. And then we have all those utilities, they have to bring to surface. Um and get a good, put a good road bed underneath these uh these pavement sections in order so it doesn't break apart on us in the future. Uh you know, within ten years, we don't want to be repaving right away. So so there's a lot that goes on just to make sure you have a good surface that you can put the asphalt on and you can still get all the utilities that you need to. So so that 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 is a project there. Uh power to the Gerwood Service Area lot, we're ready to go on this. It's just waiting on H L B to get this figured out and uh and and getting our parcel divided up. Uh that's still sort of the catch twenty-two that we're dealing with down there. So so we're hoping we can get that done in twenty-three as the new staff settles in and they're able to take on larger projects like this. Uh storage garage, uh something I put in here, this is something I think for the future. Right now, we use the old Glacier City Hall as our storage garage. It's big enough to allow for a sanding truck to park in it in the winter. Um but beyond that, it's not very big and I think in the future, the storage, there should be a better storage facility and indoor garage. So that the contractor has somewhere to work and not in the rain and weld in the middle winter. So I think that's a big project down there. Um and then repay Alberg, we did that, so we completed that. And then uh something we have on here, and this is, this is a big wish, but is a covered stand storage. So we can put our sand inside a dome tent um over this and the sand can stay dry. Right now, we use tarps and so they get up there with tarps and they hold those tarps down with all kinds of things from dirt to um pallets to tires. And uh we hope it holds and keeps our sand protected so that when they go to dig into the sand during a rain on snow event. Um it's not all frozen and uh and all the salt has washed away. So so that's always a, and then we can stop using so much plastic that gets thrown away in spring. So so yeah, that would be a nice thing to do. Now, three hundred thousand was what it was about a year ago. Who knows what the price is now, but that could change. Um and I would need to give them a call to get a better estimate. And uh I think that covers that. Um yep, and here's what am I, just building a general savings to a million dollars for for roads. Um and that goes with with our other departments as well. So um knowing that we'd be using that and then we just have to replenish it as we do projects, so. And then fire, they have the utility forty-one, the chief forty-one replacement, so that's been approved by the board for two hundred thousand dollars. Um they have an engine forty-one, the last estimated was a million dollars, but we would have to get her, get that, that would get tuned in as as they start to relook at that. At this point in time, they're they're keeping um that on the back burner as they deal with these other two vehicles that they're replacing. And then turnout's uh twenty-five thousand was approved for that. So um so they're moving forward on getting new turnouts from the firefighters. And then these don't capital purchase at the time. So so that's just a run over of all the capital projects and everything that we are trying to accomplish for the service area.
Excellent. Thank you, Kyle.
Yeah.
Margaret, any questions before we meet next time on budgets? Anyone?
I have another really basic question.
Sure.
Like in this, you you know, you you have the state, uh a hundred twenty-five K contributions can be made from the twenty twenty-two operating budget.
Correct.
Can you explain exactly what is that leftover funding from twenty twenty-two?
No, so uh let me go back here and um I'll show you. Um let me scroll up, we'll get to it. It might take a little bit to load, but let's get to. It might take a little bit to load, but let's get to, so this is Parks and Rec. So you go down here and what we do, we've been doing for many years is we ask taxpayers for funding to, for creating a contribution to the capital budget. So get down here, you can see it here. So, so within our capital budget right now is 125,000. And so in order to collect the taxes, we put it as part of our operating budget. And now at some point here, we have to go through the steps of just moving that money from operating to the capital budget. So if you think there's, there's two budgets and two accounts. And so our operating is just our yearly expenses, but we collect the contribution and then take it out of operating and put it into capital where it sits until we use it.
But it stays there until almost the next year.
Yeah, we are.
So that it's available.
I keep it until fourth quarter. I don't move it until after fourth quarter starts because in case we have some sort of disaster or, you know, the, the playground burns down or whatever, we have money that is liquid that we can grab and use.
Okay, that.
Yep. So if our expenses are really expensive, like what we're seeing in roads, I may need to use part of that money to just cover our operating expenses.
Right.
And, and in years past, the fire department has done that a lot when they've had short runs on, shortfalls on their operating budget. We just end up using the capital dollars to pay for that shortfall.
Those, that, those first, first quarter revisions may affect that. Would that funding for any first quarter revisions come out of that?
It could if the, if the, if the board did not want to raise any additional more taxes. So if we knew that we had first quarter revision, like, oh, boy, our operational expenses this year for, for utilities has gone through the roof, the board would say, well, we don't want to raise taxes anymore. I say, okay, then I have to take money from the capital contribution to do that. So, so it's kind of like a paycheck. The community receives a paycheck and we use, and we take a portion of that paycheck and we put it right in savings. And so that 125,000 is going in the savings. And then we can use that for a project that we want to do on a capital sense.
Cool. No, I appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
Jennifer had her hand up.
Jennifer, please, go ahead.
Just really quick, Kyle, we don't have to talk a lot about this right now, but is the Vale project new? The paving project wasn't on last year's capital list, was it?
It's new. And it's been something that we, I, I've talked on the side with for years, but I have not put it into our capital project. So, so it is new. It's just something that's become more and more apparent with the amount of money and time we just maintain that area.
Sure. I'm not arguing with that. And also just one other quick question about that. Would it, would sidewalks be required or not?
That's, the devil's in the details. And that's where we would have to figure that out in that aspect. Because if we can keep it as a rural area, it'd be, be good because we wouldn't be able to maintain the sidewalks in the summer, in the winter, because we need all the snow storage that we can get, especially in that area, because there's like a driveway every 15 feet. And so we're trying to, always trying to find room to keep snow since we can't haul it off. So, so yeah, the details would, would do that. But we would hope we can improve the shoulders so that the shoulders are much larger and especially in the summer would make it for a better walking area. Because when you pave, you can narrow lanes because now people have a adequate lane to drive in that they want to stay in. Whereas a gravel road, sometimes it's hard to tell where the center of the road is in that aspect.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Great. Thank you.
Margaret's got her hand up.
Oh, Margaret, thanks.
I just wanted to mention, I missed it on the agenda this time to put the reminder that Budget Meeting Two is scheduled for August the 9th at 6 o'clock. And if we need it, Budget Meeting Three is the 31st at noon. Sounds like we have quite a few things that are kind of up in the air right now. Maybe they'll become more clear between now and the 9th, but that's kind of short turnaround for the types of things that we're talking about. So for now, I hope that you guys will keep those on your calendars. And we'll try to get through it so that we can get the budget ready for approval and then going on to the assembly.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Margaret. And if the packet doesn't change very much, we could do it just on computer, but if you don't have to print it out every time. Public comment is on here. I'll read that real quick. Person's offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Anyone have a public comment tonight? I don't hear any, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I can motion adjourn.
Thanks, Guy. Second?
I can second. This is Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer. We have two minutes left in the meeting. So thank you, everyone, for your attendance tonight. Thank you, Kyle and Margaret.
Good night.
Well done, Brianna. Thanks.
It was scheduled for two hours.
It was scheduled for two hours, the room, the.